And we are recording, you may begin.
Okay, thanks Rick. This Commissioner Sam Libby. And at two o'clock today on the twentieth, I'm going to call this January twentieth meeting of the Boulder County Planning Commission to order. A few announcements first. Due to COVID nineteen concerns, this meeting is being held virtually. Information on how to participate in the virtual meetings such as this has been posted to planning commission website. There's a short link to that at www.boko.org slash PC. There will be an opportunity to remotely provide public comment on the dockets in the agenda during the respective virtual public hearing portions of each docket item. I'll provide instructions about that when we get to each of those. I'll start off first with the roll call of the commissioners. You just say I are present, Mark Bloomfield.
Present.
Sam Fitch.
Present.
And Goldfarb is absent. Sam Libby present Gavin McMillan.
Hi, present.
Dan Hilton.
Present.
Todd Quigley is also absent. Melanie Neskey. And Leisham Gorgano.
Present.
All right, good to see y'all. As a reminder for the commissioners, identify yourself please before speaking and speak slowly and clearly. All of our votes will be roll call votes. If you don't mind keeping your video on if possible, that would be great. Please remain on mute when you're not speaking. And when you do begin speaking, identify yourself as a planning commissioner so the public knows who's speaking. And you can always keep the participant list open and zoom and the gallery view to see who's speaking first. Okay, with that, move on to our agenda. Our first item will be approval of minutes or review of minutes. Are there any comments on the minutes from the eighteenth of November? Two months ago now. Okay, here are no comments. Any motions to approve?
Commissioner Bloomfield, don't move to approve the minutes.
Okay, thanks Mark. Second.
Commissioner Fitch, second.
Thank you, Sam. All right, we'll do a roll call vote again. Mark Bloomfield.
Hi.
Sam Fitch.
Hi.
Sam Libby, all abstain. I was not there for that meeting. Gavin McMillan.
Hi.
Dan Hilton.
Hi.
Melanie Neskey. And Leisham Gorgano.
Hi.
Okay, thank you all. Motion passes. Okay. Next will be any staff updates or sorry, the minutes will stand approved as written, as I'm supposed to say. Any staff updates from community planning and permitting?
No staff updates today. Thank you.
Okay, thanks Kim. Move straight into our agenda then. Today we have two items scheduled for today's planning commission meeting. Before we get to those, I'll take an opportunity to explain the public hearing process. There'll be an opportunity in each of these items to provide public comment remotely on the items. Both of these will have opportunities for testimony today. The order presentation that we'll have will be for each agenda item. We'll hear from the staff first presentation. Then the applicant, if appropriate. I will move on to public comment at that point. Many individuals who wish to speak. There are some folks that have signed up in advance. We already have your names in a list. We'll call on you first and anybody else who would like to speak, you can sign up in the chat by giving your name and the docket item you'd like to speak on. When you speak, please share your full name and your address for the record. Director comments to the planning commission. The chair myself, I'll direct any questions to staff as appropriate or to the applicant will handle that piece of it. And once we've heard that full testimony from the public, we'll close the public hearing and proceed to discussion and any vote on action. All members of the public will have a chance to speak, even if you didn't sign up, as I said before. Once people have signed up in advance and they've spoken, we'll call on people. Again, please submit your information in the chat box and zoom meeting. If you need any help, please post a question there. When we get to your name, we will unmute you. The staff will unmute you in the zoom meeting. And let you speak and then after your time's expired, we'll remove you from the participant list at that point. If you have joined by phone, I don't think we have any phone attendees today. But if anybody does join by phone or have to rejoin, you can press star nine, which will unmute you when we call on you to provide comment. Each person from public will have three minutes to speak. And there'll be a beeper that beeps at the end of your speaking time. We'll review that again just before the first public comment. I can play that beeper for you. We also do allow for pool time. If members of the public wish to speak together. You can pull at three minutes per person for a maximum of ten minutes. We'll leave the names and addresses of the people who are pulling time in advance in the chat. Anybody who's pulling time does have to be here in person. Do other reminders, please do not submit any comments, questions, or other text in the chat box beyond just noting yourself for your own public comment. It's only for signing up to be a speaker. For the public, please remain on mute if possible. We will mute you if there's any extra background noise and we'll unmute you when it's your time to speak. There's no option of the public to share screens of the applicant is welcome to share their screen if there is an applicant. And if you are going to do so, please have that ready to be pulled up and present and we'll announce and ready for that. Okay, so we're now going to open the public hearing. This is a public hearing for docket number. V dash twenty dash zero 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 seven, the Raider Wolf Vacation. And I think we'll have Rainy presenting. Let's do it.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I will share my screen.
Looks good.
All right, great. So Rainy Ott with Community Planning and Permitting, I'm presenting V dash twenty dash zero 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 seven, the Raider Wolf Vacation at. Excuse me, twenty-three-ten and twenty-seven-hundred Lake Eldora Ski Road. So we are located southwest of the town of Nederland, right next to the Eldora Ski Resort. And the applicants are Timothy Raider and Mackenzie Wolfe. They are also owners. And then also Marie Anne Gambato, Eldora Property LLC and Energy Resources Technology Land Company. Our other owners of the properties involved. It's zone forestry and the Peterson Lake addition to the town of Eldora was filed in eighteen ninety-eight. Which established the Trout Avenue Sixth Street and Fifth Street rights of way, which were never constructed. The applicant requests that those portions of these right of ways that fall within the area described in an access and utility easement recorded on April twelfth, twenty nineteen. Be vacated. A subdivision exemption request for a boundary line adjustment to add approximately point one eight acres, including the vacated area if approved. To the approximately three point eight acre parcel from the approximately one hundred and fifty-three acre parcel. Is also proposed in addition to the vacation request, but only the vacation request is under the purview of the planning commission. A little bit of background, this residence was approved through site plan review in twenty eighteen. And the purpose of this request is to locate the new water well in a more feasible place instead of up on the rocky hillside above the residence. And I mean for the twenty-three-ten Lake Eldora Ski Road property, which is the three point eight acre property. So here's an aerial map of the subject properties. The larger one hundred and fifty-three acre parcel includes the Peterson Lake addition. And the smaller three point eight acre mining claim is in the northwest area, which is where the area of the vacation is requested. So we're really just looking at this area highlighted with the yellow circle. And then here's the comprehensive plan map with several resources of note. But staff does not anticipate any negative impacts to these resources resulting from their request and parks and open space responded with no conflict. As a note, these two images are to communicate the intent of their vacation request, but are very approximate. Peterson Lake Edition Platt is on the left with the locations of the Lake Eldora Ski Road right of way in gray. And the area of the easement in blue. On the right is the aerial map with the easement area also shown. The portions of the Trout Avenue Sixth Street and Fifth Street rights of way that fall within this blue easement area are the subjects of this vacation request. So the legal description for this easement area shown here more accurately in the reddish brown over the aerial. Includes a portion of Lake Eldora Ski Road. To guarantee that the areas of right of way that are vacated. If approved are accurately reflected in the new deeds. Staff recommends a condition of approval requiring the applicant to submit a revised map, which demonstrates the final parcel configuration. Clearly delineates the new property boundaries and excludes any portion of the Lake Eldora Ski Road right of way prior to the recordation of new deeds. Here we're looking at the three point eight acre mining claim from Lake Eldora Ski Road. The approximate area of the easement is within this orange outline you see. And the existing driveway follows this easement, which was originally established for legal access through the larger one hundred and fifty-three acre parcel during site plan review. And here we're just looking back down the driveway at Lake Eldora Ski Road. And then we're looking at the southeastern boundary of the mining claim where the easement runs parallel to the parcel along the bottom portion of this slope. So a few referral responses of note. The engineering staff reviewed the proposal and responded that legal access has been demonstrated to the subject parcels. The response also noted that the easement exhibit describing the area for vacation includes a portion of the Lake Eldora Ski Road right of way. For which vacating is not supported. Therefore, prior to recordation of new deeds, the applicant must revise, submit a revised map, which demonstrates the final parcel configuration. And the new boundaries and excludes the Lake Eldora Ski Road right of way. In addition, the applicant must provide copies of recorded easements where it is necessary to cross intervening private property. To access the property at twenty-three-ten Lake Eldora Ski Road. With these amendments, the county engineer supports the vacation request. We sent forty-five notifications to adjacent property owners. And one response was received from Eldora Ski Resort requesting that the applicant survey locations of electrical facilities. And establish utility easements as necessary for access and maintenance. Then we got several responses with no conflict and also several that did not respond. Some criteria of note for the vacation request. B, criteria B. Unless otherwise noted, the portions of the road or alley vacated will be divided down the center line. And so this request specifies that the vacated areas will be transferred in their entirety. To the Raider Wolf parcel at twenty-three-ten Lake Eldora Ski Road, instead of being split down the center line. But part of the easement area is within the Lake Eldora Ski Road right of way. And there are also some existing electrical facilities. So as a condition of approval, staff recommends requiring the applicant to submit the revised map. That accurately describes the vacated area and resulting parcel. And excludes the Lake Eldora Ski Road right of way. This map should also show the utility easements for those existing electrical facilities. At least a ten foot width for those. The with the recommended conditions of approval, as stated previously, the county engineer supports the request. We found that all of the other vacation criteria have been met. And so staff recommends that the planning commission recommend conditional approval for docket V twenty zero 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 seven. The Raider Wolf Vacation, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff recommendation.
Do you have a slide of those conditions, Rainy, or just in the report?
Here you go.
Anything of note? That's out of the ordinary here?
The number one is for the revised map to clearly demonstrate or. Clearly show the new property boundaries and those easements. Number two is specifically for establishing the easements. And number three specifies that. Where like where the areas of the vacation actually are. And then four and five are typical conditions, one about post approvals and the other about commitments of record.
Thanks. What questions do we have for staff?
I have one question. With regards to the how the the right of way. That's being vacated is being split and I heard you say that the request was for it all to go to. The applicant, essentially the applicant's property. I know that's that's a typical, if you had another property owner, I think typically they would split fifty fifty. Is it, is that request supported by staff because there aren't any other property owners adjacent to the property? Or why, why are we, why is all the right of way going to the one applicant as opposed to being split?
So it's an agreement between the applicant and both property owners. So. The owners of the mining claim and the owners of the one hundred and fifty-three acre parcel agreed that this entire area shown in blue. Including the vacated right of ways would go to the mining claim. So the applicants and all the owners agreed on this arrangement. And staff supports it.
How many? How many property owners are adjacent to this right of way that's being vacated? Can you just go maybe around on your map with your cursor and show me who they are or where they are?
So there are five property owners involved. Three of them. Are associated with the mining claim and the other two are associated with one hundred and fifty-three acre parcel. And those are the only two parcels involved.
Got it. The mining claim is split up. The ownership of the mining claim is split up to three different owners, is that?
Yes, there are three people that have ownership for the mining claim.
Okay. And we have. Record somehow or somewhere of that agreement or has that just been conveyed to staff that? That was done?
It's been conveyed to staff, but there's a pretty clear history that this is an agreement between the two property owners because originally. This blue area was an access and utility easement. For access to the mining claim through the larger parcel. And that was established with all of the owner's consent. In this case, we're really just looking at it not being an easement and becoming real property. Because the state requires that for a well permit.
Okay, I don't have any other questions on that. Thank you.
This Commissioner Libby, just to clarify the order of operations here. So we're reviewing the vacation. The actual adjustment would be a board of adjustment. Review to change the ownership of those areas. This is just vacating the easement, correct?
The subdivision exemption and the vacation would be reviewed by the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay. Okay, so this is just focusing that. Thanks. It's good. It's a bit confusing because the way the parcels are broken up up there is, as you can tell. The all the different overlaps and exclusions, but I think it makes sense. Thanks. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Rainy. I believe the applicant is here, Timothy and Mackenzie to speak.
Yeah, hi, I'm Tim Raider. And my address is post office box thirty-eight seventy-six. Netherlands, Colorado, eight oh four six six. And I thought Mackenzie, who is my, Mackenzie Wolfe, who is my stepdaughter. She is planning to attend, but she may have had a conflict with work. I just. Rainy did a very thorough job of explaining all this, so I'm not sure what I really need to add. I'll just. I'll just say we we bought the property in in twenty seventeen, September of twenty seventeen, and then went through the. The the site planning review process and got an. An access easement as as was shown on the description from. From the the property owners, Erdle Inc. and. And Eldora Properties. We then. During the process of building the home. When we were having, we were at the, we were doing the setback survey. The the county surveyor actually gave us the idea of drilling the well on the easement rather than. Then where it was originally located in the site plan review. Because because it would be much easier and. And create a lot less disturbance on on a native native vegetation. So that prompted us to make an offer to purchase the property from the. From the Erdle Inc. and Eldora Properties and they agreed. And then that prompted the 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 boundary line adjustment process, which. Resulted in us requesting those rights of way being vacated and. It's kind of funny to look at that subdivision because if you know that area, you know, a lot of those roads go straight up cliffs. And. And the original nineteen eighteen ninety-eight survey even talked about installing streetcars, which. Would have been quite an engineering feat. But. Yeah, we've, you know, certainly looked at the conditions that they're Rainy presented to you and we think they're totally reasonable and have no issue with any of them. And with that, I probably have nothing else I really need to add.
Okay.
Happy to answer any questions.
Great. Yeah, thank you. Any questions from? The commissioners for the applicant? Hearing none. Thanks, Tim, for your present, your brief presentation. We're going to move on to public testimony. I covered a number of those things earlier. And let's get to the right part of the script here. So we're going to start with people who have signed up first. We have one person who signed up. Dennis Esther Brooks, it doesn't if you can get ready, if you're here to speak. Don't know if you're in the meeting or not. I don't see his name. Anna, do we have him?
I don't see Mr. Esther Brooks in our timby list.
We'll come back to him if so. Anybody else who has either signed up in the chat or wishes to speak because I'm the line? Okay, hearing none. I'll go ahead and. Close the public hearing. Or sorry, close the public comment portion of the hearing. Are there any staff statements or responses to make from Rainy from you?
I don't have anything.
Okay. And no public comments, nothing to respond to for the applicant. We'll now close the public hearing and move into our discussion for the commissioners on this docket. Before we take a vote.
I can start. I would recommend approval or I'm planning to vote for approval. I was just suggest to staff that it wasn't really quite clear to me why all of the land was. Going to the applicant. And so I think it's important to clarify that for the record. Just because I think it's a little atypical. And just want to have the record clearly show that we're we're following due process. In in that decision, but with that documented, I'm ready to vote for approval.
Yes, Commissioner Libby, I'd agree. Just a comment, Gavin, I think what I took away from that was because it was crossing over entire right of ways. In the desired part, it was able to like remove all of that, whereas usually we're talking about extending a parcel to the middle of it. So I would agree some clarification helps. It's certainly a confusing area to look at from a parcel mapping perspective and you guys got to that in the conditions. And clarified map will help a lot and. As conditioned, I'd be happy to support moving forward.
Commissioner, come. I agree with all that.
Okay, any other comments or emotion?
Commissioner Bloomfield, if I can find the recommendation, here we go. I'm happy to make a motion. Doesn't sound like we have any further discussion. I move that planning commission recommend that the Board of County Commissioners conditionally approve docket V dash two zero dash zero 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 seven. The Raider Wolf Vacation with the. Six five conditions, Alan and Steph back in.
Mr. McMillan, I'll get second.
Okay, thanks. You have a second. I'll do a vote on roll call on Mark Bloomfield.
Hi.
Sam Fitch.
Hi.
Sam Libby. I, Gavin.
Hi.
Dan. Hi. Melanie.
Hi.
And Leisham.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you to staff and the applicant. Okay, we're moving on to the second docket item today, which is a little bit longer. And that is the BVCP dash twenty dash zero zero one, the twenty twenty Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan midterm update. And we'll have presentation and public comment following that. So we'll go to Alberto and Hannah.
Thank you very much. I'm going to go ahead and show my screen. Please let me know if you are able to see it.
Looks good.
All right. Thank you, everybody. My name is Alberto Los Rios. I work with Community Planning Permitting and will run long range planner and. I am joined by Hannah Hippley, Long Range Planning Manager and Jean Gatz, Senior Planner at the City of Boulder. So the purpose of this docket is to request for approval and adoption of the elements that require four body review. As part of the twenty twenty midterm update for the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. And I'll just quickly go over some of these items and then. We'll take most of the time for planning commission deliberation and discussion. So the purpose of the midterm update is to. Incorporate progress and key objectives, but also provide an opportunity for the public to request changes to the plan. And the midterm update, unlike the major update, is only a time to make minor policy additions or clarifications to text or languages or minor amendments. And this is not intended to be a time to consider major policies, policy changes that will require city or county resources. And in this scope, there was a public request process and there was also staff requested amendments. To maps based on policies that were adopted throughout the past few years. And the planning commission reviewed some of these proposals back in June of twenty twenty. And the majority of these proposed changes only pertain to the city decision making bodies. However, three of these items require four buddy approval, which I'll be presenting today. And then one of these item only pertains to the city council and Board of County Commissioners, which is for the intergovernmental agreement or IGA. As you may know, the four body that require. To be approved are the planning board and the city council on behalf of the city and then the county has the planning commission and the Board of County Commissioners. And the following items are the ones that we'll be discussing shortly. So we have some that pertain to area one, two, and three changes, and then we have some minor policy and tax changes. The first item that we have today is open space and mountain parks properties are now above the blue line. And so what this is recommending is to change the designation of land use that align with the rural preservation character. Of the comprehensive plan and also match. The the goal of the city to preserve this land. Then we also have recently acquired open space and mountain parks properties, which are simply going to have a change of designation, which were from. Open space acquired and also open space development rights. So if you see here on the map and your staff recommendation. There's a, there's a clear demarcation of which properties are those. And then in the policy and tax changes, the majority of these are only pertinent to the city of Boulder. However, there is some such as the annexation policy. That you might want to look at, but then this is the three items that pertain to Boulder County, which is. A section in transportation which pertains to the county's transportation master plan. And also this was reviewed by Housing Human Services, which is the section to housing. And then we also have a small component in community will be and safety. And. With that being said, I would like to recommend that you move to approve and adopt the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. Midterm update as shown as described in the January twenty of twenty twenty-one staff report. And I would like to open the space now to discussion and deliberation. Thank you.
Thanks, Alberto. Anything else from the other two presenters from staff? I assume not, but. Okay, cool. What questions do we have from the planning commissioners or clarifying comments? I can start the Commissioner Libby. I haven't, I've reviewed any documents around the blue line concept in the past and I was hoping we could maybe just take a few minutes to describe what that impact and those changes reflect. This seems like the most. Direct and immediate impact of what we're reviewing. Someone from the city or from the county could describe a little more about the background of that. That line and how these changes affect things in the real world. And that might help me better understand what we're approving.
So potentially Ms. Jean Gatz might be best suited. So potentially, Ms. Jean Gatz might be best suited to answer that on behalf of the city, if she's in the call right now.
Hi, hello, Alberto and members of the planning commission. Thank you for the opportunity. So the blue line changes that were a part of this midterm update were really reflecting the implementation of the change in location of the blue line that was clarified by the voters in two thousand sixteen. So as you know, the blue line was created in nineteen fifty nine as a part of the city charter to prohibit city water from being provided above that certain location. And so the process in two thousand sixteen was to clarify areas where there were either the blue line was vague, it had had locations that were based on either geographic ditches or other things that had changed since the original adoption and really truly to just clarify that location. We did take into account especially that the change that's before you regarding city owned open space and mountain parks properties. The intention on this was to clarify the location of the blue line to the east or that those properties for rural preservation would be above the blue line. And so that's what these changes are affecting. There were a couple of changes regarding the blue line that were made during the two thousand fifteen major update around the Spring Valley and Knollwood neighborhoods. And the those areas then became part of area two to allow them to get city water. There are a handful of properties within this update also that were decisions that were just to body approval, but also reflect the ability then for these these western fully developed western edge properties to be eligible for water and sewer provision, which is a goal of the comprehensive plan. So does that answer your question?
Sure. Yeah, no, I just wanted to hear a little more about it. What I took away from that was that this is basically helping to bring the BVCP into alignment with the changes that already started in twenty sixteen.
Absolutely.
Okay.
That's shorter.
Got it. It's enough from your topic to me, so just helpful to get some more discussion about it. Thank you.
Commissioner Libby, can I jump in with a specific question about the blue line for you?
Absolutely.
Not to interrupt you. There's two changes, the Summers change and the Hutchinson change, where it looks like an area that I would think should be in area three because it's above the blue line seems to have been retained in area two. And Alberto, I'm looking at page twelve of the staff report, the graphics you put together, which were very helpful. Thank you. They kind of zoom in on the area. So I don't know if you can put those up and show what I'm talking about. But in the southeast corner of the Hutchinson, one at three five 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 Fourth Street. The blue line shown, and then to the east of it is area two, which makes sense. But to the west of it, there's still a portion that wasn't or isn't proposed to be placed into area three. And I'm just wondering if that's done intentionally, or it seems like everywhere else, things that were left west of the blue line came into area area three as part of this map revision. So that just caught my eye. It's a little nitpicky, but I'm curious if that was intentional.
Commissioner McMillan, this is the graphic you were referring to?
No, in your staff report, you zoom in on the each individual change. This one is on page.
It's H nine, I think.
Yeah, it starts on nine. The one I'm looking at is on page twelve, I believe.
This is page H nine, yes.
We're only seeing your PowerPoint, Alberto, if you would share the whole screen.
Please apologize.
That's why we were confused. No worries.
How about you?
Oh, there you are. Yeah, that's that's the one. So down in the southeast corner of the image on the right, see where the blue line runs and how to the west of it, it's shown as area two, and the east of it's. I was under the impression that we were kind of bringing everything west of the blue line into area two.
Right. I think I can speak to that. So I believe so that that little the the little gray parcel that's labeled area two. It's up since it's private property. We're keeping the entire parcel the same designation, so not trying to split those designations.
Got it. So it cuts through a property. Got it. That makes perfect sense. Thanks for answering.
Sure.
Any other questions at this time before we move on to public comment? Okay, let's close our questions and move on to the public comments. Again, if you have signed up, we'll go for these names first. We have three names that Anna just posted to the chat. If anyone else would like to speak, you can put your name in the chat window to request that, and we'll get to you after that. Or if you're on the phone, you can unmute and speak as well. And I think we still have the first person, Dennis Esther Brooks, who is not present. If he is, he can rejoin or speak up. The next person would be Donna George. If you're present, and again, it's three minutes, and we'll have a beeper that plays at the end of those three minutes to let you know when time has expired. But if Donna is here, you're welcome to speak.
Hi, this is Donna. Yeah, and I'm calling with two people. My husband, Mark George, is here.
Hi, this is Mark.
And also Kit Fuller.
Excellent. Okay. And remind me, Anna, does that mean there's ten minutes?
That would be nine minutes, three.
Nine minutes. All right, so it'll be nine minutes. Rickels at the timer, and if you guys could just share your address when you start speaking, or at least you, Donna, with the others in the chat, maybe afterwards, you'll have nine minutes to throw out comments.
Okay, thank you. My hello, my name is Donna George. I live at four six six one Tally Ho Court. I put in a request during this Boulder Valley Comp Plan twenty twenty midterm update for review of the land use designations in the unincorporated areas and possibly some in the city of the Boulder Valley Cop Plan to ensure their accuracy. I also requested to change the colors used on the land use map for the three open space designations to better discern them. I noted some of the inaccuracies in the map, and in my request, I as well spoke to the Boulder County Parks and Open Space Advisory Committee about updating the map with their acquisitions. For some reason, my request has been delayed to the next update in two thousand twenty five, even though I brought these inaccuracies to the attention of Eric Lane and Chris Messcheck during the two thousand fifteen update. The city has put in land use change requests for their open space acquisitions during this midterm upgrade. So why the delay for the county open space acquisitions? I have spoken at meetings of POSAC during this update period, and they have provided a list of properties that need to be updated and should be. Why are the updates being done for city open space properties during this midterm update, but not for county open space properties? During my presentation of my request to staff and elected officials, I commented on how we are in the middle of a global pandemic where much of the public is occupied with the resulting health and economic consequences of the pandemic and that this update should be postponed for a couple of years. The two thousand fifteen update was not completed until two thousand seventeen, so that should have easily been done. However, staff was intent on getting this update completed in twenty twenty and has engaged the public for only about eight months at most. And much of the public is unaware of the land use designation changes that requested or the policy changes drafted by city staff. How many public comments and emails have you gotten concerning the changes being proposed during this midterm update? In your agenda packet for this meeting, there are only two comments under community input for policy and tax changes, only two. And yet there are nineteen pages in the policy and tax changes initiated by the city of Boulder with at least four new policies included. Also, why hasn't a subcommunity chapter policy change not been included in what the county bodies will be voting on? And why is the county voting on a city policy to reflect the two thousand nineteen decision that fifty percent of all housing in the city of Boulder be permanently affordable by two thousand thirty five? In many subcommunities, there are properties both in the city of Boulder and in unincorporated areas of Boulder County. This is especially true in Gunbarrow. It is your duty to work for and represent the citizens in all of Boulder County, including and especially the unincorporated areas in the various subcommunities. On page two of your packet for this meeting tonight, it states the following. According to the current Boulder Valley Comp Plan, the purposes of midterm update are to address objectives identified in the last major update and review progress made in meeting those objectives, provide an opportunity for the public to request changes to the plan, and make minor additions or clarifications to the policy section. Albert reiterated this in his presentation today. These changes in the subcommunity plan, they have been totally rewritten. These changes are far from minor additions and clarifications. This almost complete rewrite of the subcommunity and area planning chapter is not appropriate for this midterm update and should not be changed. During the meetings in May through July, the information in the agenda packets for these many policy changes were just a general listing that took about half a page, and there was no detailed word by word description of the changes. These only became available in the city planning board and city council agendas for their meetings in December, another very busy time of year when citizens are preoccupied with the holiday season and not paying much attention. Maybe this was purposeful on the part of the staff and governing officials. The Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan is fast becoming a document by and for the predetermined agenda of the governing bodies and staff and not by and for the citizens of Boulder Valley in the planning of the community in which they live. It has become a vehicle for deploying sustainable Boulder as a blueprint for other communities within the state, the country, and the world to copy. In the attempt to be this shining example for other communities, Boulder has greatly ignored the input and concerns of the unincorporated areas within the Boulder Valley and destroyed the democratic process. The ends now appear to justify the means. Community outreach has become a check the box, cover your ass exercise rather than a sincere and honest community engagement. How many people are on this call today? How many people are engaged in these changes? Now today, this important vote on the Boulder Valley Compliment midterm update is taking place on in historical presidential inauguration day. How many citizens are here today on this line? This vote could not wait another month or two? During the two thousand fifteen Boulder Valley Compliment update, staff came to Gunbarrow with a presentation on residential building types in industrial areas. There were various types of housing shown, and citizens were asked to rate them as to which types they would prefer. But missing in this outreach was single family homes and no development at all. The majority of industrial land is in Gunbarrow. Most citizens also assumed that the development industrial zones to build more residential units would be on land that was already developed with buildings on it and not on the few remaining undeveloped land parcels that could be used for parks or open space. Saving these few remaining undeveloped parcels is even more important now considering the pandemic and the need for open recreational space within communities where people live. Surveys and outreach in the community has not been sincere and honest, but rather an exercise to get the predetermined outcome from the already set agendas of staff and governing officials. If you ask a question on a survey, are you in favor of affordable housing, I suspect most people would say yes. But deeper questions were never asked, such as do you support upzoning your neighborhood and building higher and denser apartment buildings in it? Or the question of what type of affordable housing rental or for sale should be built? These suburban rural areas do not want to be densified and urbanized for the benefit of the city of Boulder and outside developers and investors. There are other great ideas for increasing affordable housing and combating climate change. All you need to do is ask and engage the citizens instead of reeroding, pushing through the predetermined ideas and agenda of the staffing governing bodies. This this subcommunity plan should not go through. That change is outrageous, and it is your duty to make sure that does not go through. I also want to state that according to the blue line, one of the things that Jean forgot to mention, and here's a meeting date, August second, two thousand sixteen. It says more precisely defining the blue line for clarity has been discussed over the years, but has not been pursued because it required significant staff time to do the research. However, now that city maps are being scrutinized more closely for municipalization and the need to annex properties to avoid duplication of electric services to serve out of city customers, the precise location needs to be defined. And I have a map that shows where the lines need to be for the electric utility. And that that thing, when are you going to tell those people that now we're going to area two from area three? That they will soon be surrounded by city annex space because they'll annex the open space to the left of them to the thing. And they'll be forcibly annexed into the city for the municipalization thing. That was never, as again, I'm talking about truth is not being told, you're not being honest with citizens. I would like to tell you about a couple of quotes on tyranny. The road to tyranny, we must never forget, begins with the destruction of the truth. Withholding information is the essence of tyranny. Control of the flow of information is a tool of the dictatorship. One submits to tyranny when one renounces the difference between what one wants to hear and what is actually the case. And also, here's another very important thing. Is there a mechanism by which a certain kind of cognitive commitment to a political or moral theory might cause someone willingly to harm others in its pursuit, prevent them from seeing the harm they are doing, or even make invisible to them the data that would demand a revision of their beliefs to better reflect human experience and lead to outcomes more aligned with their stated goal? You all need to stop doing this thing. This has the Boulder Valley Compliment has become a tool for doing sustainable Boulder and not a general tool for what the development that the people want. One of your changes, the change here says communicate expectations about the future of the community through the residents, not what the residents want in the community. You're going to communicate expectations about the future of our community to us? You're all supposed to be working for the citizens, not the other way around.
Thank you, Ms. George. Thank you for your comments. Okay, I think on our list as well, following that, I can't remember who you pulled with. I'm sorry, but is Kit Fuller here to speak? Or was that part of the pulled group?
It's part of the pool.
Okay, thank you. And is there anybody else who has signed up in the chat? Anna, I think the answer is no.
I do not see any one additional.
Okay. Anybody else from public on the meeting who would like to speak? You're welcome to enter your name in the chat now. Give you a few minutes. Okay, hearing none. I will close the public hearing, or sorry, close the public comment section of the public hearing. Are there any responses from staff to any of the comments from the public?
I can make one comment about the scoping. George had asked why changes to designations, other designations that she found an error in the Boulder Valley Comp Plan were not included in this update. It was not included in the original scoping. And when it was discussed with POSAC, we were sort of had proceeded with the scope that had been agreed to at that time between the city and the county. So expanding the scope in response to that question was not feasible at that time. Additionally, Ms. George does bring up a good point in that there are inconsistencies and errors. Probably we don't know the extent of it. And honestly, she, there is a list, Parks and Open Space has a known list. But the comp plan map really needs sort of a detailed scrubbing. And that does is more intensive of staff time and requires some significant resources that we wouldn't have had to dedicate at this time. It is on our agenda for the major update. Ms. George spoke a lot about the Gunbarrow Subcommunity Plan, and my only comment in response to that at this point in time is that portion of the Boulder Valley Comp Plan is not subject to four body review at this time. So it's not something we really can address here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from staff? Okay, hearing none. Okay, hearing none. We'll now close the public hearing on this document item and move on to planning commission discussion and eventual vote.
So this is Commissioner Hilton. I just wanted to clarify. There are only three sections that are subject to four-body review that we are being asked to approve today. Chapter 3, Section 6, Chapter 3, Chapter 3, Section 7, and Chapter 3, Section 8. Is is that accurate? So that's the only piece of all of this that we are actually being asked to approve?
Commissioner Hilton, I might ask for some clarification, but you're referring to just item J because the three items that you're looking at are item H, I, and J as found in your staff report. And then within item J, there's those three sections within chapter 3. And that is all within just one item.
Okay, so all of that is subject to four-body review?
That is correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
This is Commissioner Libby. Yeah, I think it's a little bit hard reading through the language in the in the staff packet to know, as Dan just pointed out, you know, which things are actually part of the review here. I think a lot of the information provided is context to other changes being made, which is helpful, but makes it a little hard for us to focus on the immediate changes. One question I had Hannah based on your on your response there was if there are some or maybe multiple issues with the land use map that's in the Comp Plan. I do find it compelling to say that waiting five years to update those does seem like a long time. Is there any, we can give a, you know, a comment that goes with our recommendation, right? That we recommend doing that earlier. But I imagine it is feasible to do it earlier if the decision is made by the department to prioritize that.
Well, we'll have a major update upcoming. The known irregularities that are in the Comp Plan from Parks and Open Space are generally reflect property that has already become open space. So there are designations on the land use map. Doesn't really put them, I mean, it's a matter of changing the color on the land use map. It doesn't change the fact that the county may have already purchased those properties. So they're already preserved. It just may not be reflected on the map. Those are the items that we are concerned about. So it it really is just a mapping exercise. It doesn't change any of the reality of the fact that the county has already purchased those properties that exist on in the on the ground today. So it isn't something that's urgent for that reason. But it does take evaluation, and it makes us want to look at the map as a whole.
Yeah, understood. So there's not really a risk to it, so to speak, of something being incorrect and misinterpreted. I think the risk is that if the public is using this document as their means of reference to understand how these policies apply to their own geographies, and the map is the way they see that, having that as accurate as possible helps them understand what really is an impact versus what is a mapping error or just lack of update.
Yes. The other thing, actually, while you've given me the floor that I wanted to mention in regards to the policies, for the county, the changes reflect adopted plans that have already been reviewed and approved by planning commission and the board. So things like the changes to transportation or housing and human services things. These are plans that have been adopted since the last major update. So we're just really pulling in updated content into the Boulder Valley Comp Plan.
And they are also, in some cases, policies that only apply to the city of Boulder itself, right? That are just referenced in the Comp Plan, is that accurate?
Yes, and the text piece is a little challenging to parse out for you because there are a lot of text changes in the way it's written in the plan with four-body review is necessary for those policies that apply to both the city and the county. But there are a lot of, there's a lot of content in there that does not apply to the county. So we've tried to pull out what's what you're acting on here today.
Thank you. Other comments or discussion from the commissioners?
Commissioner Fitch. Sam, I have a question about procedure. And that is whether we are really trying to focus on the series of the whole package of midterm proposed updates, or whether we're just focusing on the three items. So we started off with a discussion of Attachment H, all of which deals with the blue line adjustments. Do you want to discuss those and approve those separately? Or do you want to deal with just the whole package?
My preference would be the whole package. I think you're right to say that we've only discussed that in depth. So if there's H, I, and J, and then kind of three subsections of J, so to speak, it'd be good to comment on those, but I'd like to do it all together if possible, that's what's being requested. So maybe we can, that would be a good way to go through it, and I might ask staff to clarify a few things. I think we're good on the blue line adjustments, so then let's say there are comments or questions on that. On item I, which is the land use changes for recently acquired open space and mountain parks properties. Maybe other two, you could summarize what that reflects, just so we're all on the same page. Or something else from staff?
Yeah, sure. So here I will go ahead and share a full list of all the changes. Please keep me one second, so. I'm going to go ahead and show my screen for that. This reference to a document shared by the city of Boulder, are you able to see it right up?
Yes.
Okay, so this, this, it shows that when the transaction was closed and when these properties were acquired in the acreage. And it's just currently showing the current land use designation, what they're trying to do. So this just reflects something that was a transaction that already occurred, and therefore there's no technical change other than just the designation that shows in maps and documents. Does that clarify your question, Commissioner Libby?
Yeah, so the the land use categorization here, you said there's no no impact of that change? Or is there a potential impact of changing from, for example, OS development rights to open space acquired? Is there, was just really mapping up to say, open space acquired means it's already been acquired, which all of these have, so that's the accurate designation?
That is correct.
Okay. And that's all of them except for the lieu easement, conservation easement, I assume, is CE?
That's correct.
That makes sense to me, okay. Any other questions about or comments about this one?
Commissioner McNabb, just one question about the disposals. The specifically the is it St. Walberga Abbey disposal? We, you note that it goes from OSA designation to a non-designation. Would assume that you'd want some designation on the land. Is there a reason that went to none?
Ms. Jean Gensel, would you mind answering that question?
Yeah, I'm pulling up the the information. I may not have seen. I'm sorry, it's taking me just a minute. And I'm trying to remember the details about that.
Gavin, this is page eighteen of the staff packet, is that right?
Yeah.
Or I, I three, I guess, there's two different ways to number it.
Yeah, the PDF.
So the, this is Commissioner Hilton, so the packet says the point five eight acres on the St. Walberga Abbey property were part of a complex land exchange approved by OSBT and City Council that resulted in a net benefit to OSMP.
Right. I guess I'm wondering why it doesn't have a land use designation. I saw that too, I was, I guess, a little confused by the language there.
You know, I'm not sure specifically on that. We do have some areas within the Area 3 that doesn't have a land use designation. But I don't, I can't, I'm not sure I can answer that.
Okay, and these four areas are within Area 2, right? Well, the text, the text implies they are above, I'm not sure whether they are.
Is it perhaps because it has a, it's a conservation easement? Sorry, I'm guessing. I don't mean to speculate.
Unfortunately, we, mostly with our open space and mountain park staff, and I might have known the answer to this when we were working on this last summer. But I can't, I can't say exactly what the reason for that is at the moment. We would be happy to follow up with the board on that if if that would be okay.
Oh, it's fine by me. It's like a probably an explainable anomaly. Just was looking for some information.
Yeah, I think this is Commissioner Libby, anytime we're disposing of property in official capacity here, like removing OSA land use, that there's, it's good to provide more information as to why. And so maybe providing that to the board would be helpful. As unfortunately, these kind of things where there is a lot of complex, very small parcels with different terminology is what I think leads this in public doubt in the process a little bit, right? If we're not able to give good reasoning behind those. So if we're able to show clearly the why and verify that none is the proposed land use at the board, that would be great.
Well said, a second.
Any other comments on the item I of the area, one, two, and three changes, the land use changes? Okay. Then the third major area of review is around the policy and text changes, of which there are many, but there are three major areas. Alberto, tell me if I'm wrong on this, three major areas that do require for body approvals are really under our review today on transportation, housing, and community well-being and safety. Maybe you could just pull up your slide again, Alberto, on the summary of those, and we can use that to speak to any questions.
Are you able to see the table now?
Yeah, perfect.
Great.
Is it accurate to say that all of the text changes that we're reviewing in this are reflecting basically incorporating already approved policy, already adopted policy from another body?
This is correct.
Okay, that makes it easier for me.
I will, I will clarify again that all these items have been reviewed by other county bodies. And for instance, the housing section has been reviewed by the Department of Housing and Human Services, and the transportation section has been reviewed by the Transportation Planning Department under CPMB.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments on these from the commissioners? Okay. So having reviewed kind of the three major areas, I'd be interested in kind of general, general comments on disposition towards the approval or any motions here. I could start, I guess, I came into this feeling like I didn't have enough information to really give a good recommendation about this. I think we've clarified through the staff discussion, the the rather narrow scope of what we're actually reviewing and approving. Just to, I guess, from the public comment from Ms. George, I thought there were a number of important questions that were raised there, few of which I think were within our purview of this text. And so I'm understanding of those concerns and and hope those are taken into account in future revisions, as well as other areas that can be reviewed. I think what we're reviewing primarily concerns other items. And so in general, I'm in favor of the changes as they've been described.
This is Commissioner Gargano, yeah, I agree. I think in the major update, it sounds like they're going to handle the the mapping and some of those other questions. And otherwise, I think it looks good.
This is Commissioner Fitch. Is it, I'd like to ask staff if it's correct that the specific, there was a list of changes in sub-community planning that all of those were within the city of Boulder.
This is correct.
I can speak to that. So I think what Ms. George referenced was the text description of the sub-community and area planning section of the plan. That is within, it's under the purview of the city body, so it's a two-body approval. And it was, the changes there were based on direction from the planning board and the city council in a full review of the sub-community and area planning process through 2019. Those and those changes reflect that direction.
Thank you. Any other?
No, just Commissioner McNabb, I'm ready to vote for approval. Personally, I think the changes we see fit in the minor midterm types of changes. And I think more of the substantive big changes really need to happen on that annual, or sorry, ten-year update schedule. So I'm ready to vote for approval of what we have before us today.
I was.
Go ahead.
I'm happy to
Go for it.
Move that we approve and adopt the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan midterm updates as shown and described in our staff report for this meeting.
And I'll second the motion, thanks, Lucian. All right, let's take a vote. All right, Mark Bofield.
I.
Sam Fitch.
I.
Sam Libby, I.
Gavin Millen.
I.
Dan Hilton.
Hi.
Melanie Neskey. And Leishy Gargano.
Hi.
And that was an I, right? I couldn't quite hear you. Okay, thanks. All right, the motion passes, thank you. Thank you to staff for presentation, to public for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's our last document item for today. Unless there's anything else from staff to cover, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Commissioner Bofield, I move your adjourn.
Commissioner Fitch, second.
Okay. I'd have to take a roll call vote on that as well, I think, or just a voice vote, all in favor. Say, okay, I don't have a gavel, but we're adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year.
Happy inauguration day.